Welcome. Like to reconvene the Board meeting of July 16th, 2012, Valley View School District. Mr. Venegas, would you like to lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gugis will be doing the board affirmation statement, once he gets his computer loaded.
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as being equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful, effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments, with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. Dr. Mitchum is on vacation. Mr. Gruzafi will be the superintendent of record for this evening, just in case anybody's wondering what's going on on this side of the table. And Ms. Hanson is on vacation as well, so... And Mr. Curran has a work-related issue that precluded him from being here this evening. So, moving down the agenda, any... where we at? Any agenda revisions?
Yes, two agenda revisions this evening. Mr. President, I'd like to ask the board to approve the following. Move item 8.2, Humphrey Middle School Track State Qualifiers, as the next item on the agenda, which is before the public hearing, and moving action item 12.2, District Calendar Waiver of Certain Holidays, to follow the close of the public hearing and the waiver of certain holidays.
Motion to accept the agenda as revised. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion... Pardon me?
Question, I have a...
Any questions on that?
Yes, or I have an agenda revision. I want to take off 7.5 as a consent agenda, so we can discuss it.
Okay. Any questions on that? 7.5, we'll go into... I guess it would go to 8.1, or prior... right prior to that?
Yeah, I think, upon the request of one board member, you have to remove a consent agenda item from the consent agenda, so it goes... you can talk about it right...
At the bottom.
Yeah, right there. You have to discuss it independently, right before you get into student and staff recognition, or you can do it after that if you want. It doesn't matter.
All right. Any other agenda revisions? Seeing none, motion to approve would be in order. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The ayes have it. Moving down the agenda.
Actually, we're gonna...
Track. The track guys. If you're running in this heat, you get big kudos from this kid. Because this chubby guy ain't running in none of this.
Thank you. I'm Dan Laverty. I'm principal at Humphrey Middle School. I'd like to thank the school board and senior leadership for honoring our state qualifiers and state champions tonight from the middle school track event. I'd also like to thank our athletic director, Vicky Critchison, our two coaches that could not be here, Coach Stiff and Coach Guyer. I'd like to introduce Coach Zanderson and Coach Ipama to tell you about our track team.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys having us here. As always, we, as coaches, we appreciate the ability to have our students perform in athletics. It's a great tie into the curriculum, into the community. These boys and girls were not only great athletes, but also great students. Triana Rodriguez was our miler, went downstate, improved on, and gave her best time of the year. And then we have our seventh-grade boys. And then we had two boys who are here tonight. They are members of our four-by-one, second-place, state four-by-100 relay team, and that's Gesante Howard and Tyler Elmore. Along with the... and I'd just like to commend these boys, eligible all-year, grade-wise, great students, at practice, great work ethic, team leaders. Gesante was also the first-place 100-meter dash in the finals, and he also had his personal best in the long jump, taking fifth place. Tyler also competed in the high jump and increased his position from a seeding, as well as the 200. He medaled in the 200 and the 400-meter dash, so it was a very successful year. These boys led us to fourth place in state finish as a team, which hasn't been done at Humphrey in about 11 years, so we appreciate it. Thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thanks for your dedication. Next, we're opening the public hearing, correct, Gary, for the discussion of waiver of certain holidays, if we so choose to enact those waivers?
Yes.
Need a motion to do that?
Yes. Mr. President, Quigley, I ask...
Need a motion?
A motion to go into public hearing on the district calendar.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Need a roll call vote, please?
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Gugis?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
We are now going to the hearing. Ms. Williams Smith.
That's right, and you know what? I take that as a compliment, because, Mr. President, I ask that the board approve the action item for waiving certain holidays, and I'm requesting this approval for the waivers as outlined in the action report, because the current proposed public school calendar has Lincoln's birthday as scheduled as an attendance day, with schools being closed instead on President's Day, so we have to seek...
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Mr. President, can I interrupt quickly?
Sure.
The way the student... the school code is written, it's a little odd. This is an unusual one. It requires any testimony, and it uses the word "testimony" with respect to this holiday issue. So, in light of that phraseology in the school code, what I'd ask, because I know Mr. Gruzafi is a notary public, he's authorized to administer oaths, so I would suggest that Mr. Gruzafi swear in anybody who presents any comments or testimony during the public hearing with respect to the holidays.
Is there anybody in the audience who also would like to make comment on this? If not, Gary, go ahead.
Why? No, you...
Please step forward and just be...
Just be sworn in, and you have a right to speak.
Please raise your right hand. Do you agree to tell the whole truth and nothing but your truth, so helps you got?
Yes, raise your hand. I do.
Consider yourselves sworn in for this testimony purposes.
You're gonna let her...
But I need to...
We're gonna let her present first.
I'm going to just re-present the information I'm requesting in regards to waiving this particular holiday. The... again, the request to waive certain holidays, we are looking to waive Lincoln's birthday as an attendance day. President's Day will be closed, and we're asking for flexibility with Columbus Day, as well as Pulaski. We will still be having those days as non-attendance days this school year, but we'd like to have the flexibility with scheduling them as attendance days in the future, so that we can have the appropriate number of school attendance days in upcoming years. So, it will not impact the 12-13 calendar, and it's never been a concern in past years, because Lincoln's birthday has typically fallen on a weekend, but we want to make sure that we stay in compliance, because we already have the school calendar set for this upcoming school year, and to stay in compliance with the Regional Office of Education, as well as the ISBE, we have to get this formal approval from the board tonight, so it's really just a formality.
Well, I understand that. But my question is this. My name is Lori Bjork, and you might have received an email from me back in March, all board members, regarding the Odyssey program, and my background in education, and a faculty member at Aurora University, and also, I have a student, or a son, who attends the district at Pioneer. My question to you is this. That's great that you want to switch from Lincoln's birthday to President's Day. I understand that. My personal opinion is that Pulaski Day should be an attendance day for all, but that's not why I'm here. My purpose is to make sure that you do not use these flexible days, as you called it, the Columbus and Pulaski Day, as attendance day for teachers, as a bargaining tool for your negotiations with the teachers and their contract.
Well, we have to, as per past practice, have consultation with the union whenever we look to make changes such as these, so that would be a discussion point at a calendar committee meeting, which union representatives are a part of, and we seek to make sure that that communication stays open with them, so that we are not in violation with the teacher contract.
But that there is no contract right now.
We are in negotiations at this time.
You are in negotiations, but there is not a contract, correct?
We have not finalized the amendments to the contract.
Correct, so what I'm asking you is, what is your intention for the Columbus Holiday and Pulaski Day for the teachers of District 365U?
For the 12-13 school year, we're going to continue on with our practice of having Kashmir, Pulaski Day, and Columbus Day as non-attendance days.
For students, but not teachers?
Well, that would... if it's non-attendance days for students, then teachers, obviously, would also fall in line with that.
Well, it was my understanding that you wanted to have Columbus Day and Pulaski Day become attendance days for teachers, for staff development, et cetera, but still be a non-attendance day for students.
Well, that is something... that's a finer point that we've not changed for this upcoming school year, so as you know, it'll be status quo for this upcoming school year. That's not something that we factored into our negotiations this year.
Okay, so the flexibility, then, is what?
Is just for upcoming, subsequent years, and that would have to be discussed with the union. If that were to be a change, as you mentioned, as you referenced just now, that would have to go under discussion. But that is not going to change for this upcoming year.
I'm just making sure that you do not want to make... have the teachers attend... Because when you say non-attendance day, that's for students, but that doesn't necessarily mean for teachers. I do believe there was something in the Bowling Brook Pat, or my suburban life, or whatever, that I read, that you were requesting this waiver because you wanted to have that in place for staff development, for your teachers.
To my understanding, that has not been on the table for this year?
No. Okay, because I could certainly find...
And I've sworn in as well, so then it not been on the table.
I could find my notes and email all of you, because I, you know, as an educator, I think that that's important, that you don't start off the school year with, you know, the morale's low. It is, and this would really make it much lower if you were trying to do something like that, so I'm just up here making sure that that's not the case.
Understood. Your concern is duly noted, and I appreciate you bringing that to us, so that we can look at that more closely, but as with any significant change, it's important that all stakeholders be at the table when discussing something of that matter.
Absolutely, and I hope that the teachers' union president is here and noting this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. A motion would be in order to adjourn the hearing, public hearing?
So moved.
Motion, and second by Mr. Gugis, second by Mr. Bull. Any discussion on that? Roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Gugis?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Now, we go to... I'm sorry. Action item report 12.1, District Calendar Days Waiver of Certain Holidays. A motion would be in order to pass the recommended...
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Gugis?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Now, back to...
President Quigley, I just want to make a comment, because I see some puzzled faces. The first motion we did was to close the motion that we were having the discussion, and then the second motion was for us to vote on it, so that's what we just did.
And again, I think the whole purpose of this is to, A, make sure we're in compliance with what the regional superintendent's office is requiring, and to make sure that our calendar is in compliance, and this just gives us flexibility on certain days, on certain years, to match up with calendars and dates, so that's pretty much it, is the way it was explained to me and the way I read it, so... Moving down the agenda, Mr. Gruzafi, Treasurers Report.
Treasurer Report 6.1 is a report for June 2012, including the financial reports, balance sheets, and summary of revenue and expenditures and encumbrances, along with the interim obligation payments for June 2012 totaling $4,171,732.12, presented for your approval and action.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion on Treasurer's Month Report? Roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Gugis?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Two scheduled bills for this evening, as is typical at year-end. First is the Treasurer's Action Report 6.2, representing scheduled bills for June 30, 2012, totaling $5,125,108.11, for your consideration and approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Gugis?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Second, Treasurer's Action Report 6.3, scheduled bills July 2012 totaling $3,23,822.54, for your consideration and action.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Gugis?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
For Treasurer's Information Reports, presented for your information only, those are the summary of investments for June 2012, property taxes received June 2012, a state funding update June 2012, and the all schools' trust account activity through May 31st of 2012. If you have any questions?
Any questions on the... I did, you know, my comment about state funding, $4.13 million? Or do we have any idea when we may or may not... State's fiscal year has ended?
I have not heard any update to that effect. This is actually somewhat of an improvement, ending the year with just one, if you will, MCAT, or mandated categorical payment owed in the areas of transportation and special education, so if we were to receive that as late as August 31st, we would able to book... be able to book that in this fiscal year that just ended. Anything past that would be received, booked and received in the next fiscal year, which is probably most likely.
Do we know what's going on with the may or shall language in the state law that was passed, if the governor signed it yet or not, that may or shall allow for transportation requirements? Is that...
I've not heard any update on that. I've not heard any advancements, good or bad.
To explain what's going on, the state passed a bill, or had a law several years ago, for however many years on the books, that said you shall transport students back and forth, and then they would reimburse for a certain amount of that money for transportation of our students. That being said, they have changed the game by saying one word in the law that says "may" instead of "shall." You may transport the students if you so choose, but if they... if you so choose, then they may not reimburse us for that transportation money, so there's a hole in the budget that we were not... because I don't see us changing our transportation mechanisms for how we get our kids back and forth to school, but the state pays for a certain percentage of that, and if they change their obligation by that one letter, or that one word in the law, it could create several million-dollar financial hardship for the district, correct?
Oh, yeah, that's... it's a big number, close to $6 million.
There you go. So, again, the state's got budget issues, everybody's got budget issues, but they're trying to balance their budget issues on the back of the local governments, in which case, our school district in this situation, so... Thank you, Mr. Gruzafi.
The trust accounts, Mr. Gruzafi, are we... are all our i's crossed and t's... I mean, all our t's crossed and our i's dotted?
That's certainly our intention, with the amount of schools and activity that runs through those student activity accounts annually. The auditors are bound to find something that doesn't meet with their expectation.
No, we can have a clean bill from the auditors, right?
We will... we strive for that each and every year, since we are cited for it each and every year. We continue to provide training, ongoing training, for our support personnel in all of our buildings. We are only a phone call away. Ms. Borg does several site visits as necessary, surprise visits as necessary, to those schools that have had maybe some issues in the past, so...
When does that report due?
Typically, the auditors will be out late August, early September, and we usually receive that in mid-October.
Thank you.
Moving down the agenda, consent agenda items, with the exception of item 7.5. Motion to approve, as presented...
So moved.
Second.
Gary, you want to go ahead and go through them?
Sure. The consent agenda items consist of the board meeting minutes of June 11, 2012, executive session meeting minutes, June 11, 2012, student activity contract for Opium Elementary with Interstate Studios for 2012-13, gifts being received by Jonas Salk and Opium Elementary Schools, as well as a trip for Bowling Brook High School.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Gugis?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Action Item 7.5. Ms. Campbell?
Yes, I'm sure along with...
Oh, yeah, we need a motion to... Motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion?
Discussion. I know that myself, along with the rest of your board members, received some emails today concerning this matter, so that's why I wanted to bring it out, and to have a little discussion about it. So, some of the comments were, and since Dr. Mitchum isn't here, my imp proposal is that we table this item until he's actually here, so he can answer some of those comments. Some of the emails, I know one in particular, and I've heard that a couple times even in route to coming here tonight, is that he wouldn't take any money until the scores, achievement, had been done, and so these were some of the questions that our taxpayers are asking, and so I want them to be able... you guys can't hear me? I want them to be able to have those questions answered before I can make a vote on this tonight, so if there's any discussion that we can have without Dr. Mitchum, please do so. If not, I would like us to table this until he's back from vacation.
Is that a motion? Is that in the formal motion?
Well, right now, we have the motion. I'm just discussing, so we'll have to work on this motion, write attorney, and then we can table this.
I think, if I understand what you're asking, Board Member Campbell, I think the proper procedure here would be... currently pending on the table is the motion to approve the amendment, and if you wanted to put on the table a motion to table that discussion, or excuse me, motion to table that motion until the August meeting, you would make your motion to table now. That motion would require a second. There's no discussion on a motion to table, and you just go straight to a vote on the motion to table. If the motion to table fails, then you take up the original motion again.
All right, well, I am motioning that we table this to our August meeting.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Hearing none, seeing none. The motion fails for lack of a second. Back to the original motion to approve the contract as amended. We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'm still going to state my concern that the taxpayers have it, and I've already emailed Dr. Mitchum that I was going to do this tonight, so it's nothing that anybody wants to go and run and tell him I already did that. So, I still believe that we should have had some more discussion about this, and that he should have been present, and I'm gonna leave it at that. That is my comments about this motion.
We had an agreement when we were discussing Dr. Mitchum's contract for his superintendency to become our superintendent, I guess. That was part of the discussion, tuition reimbursement for his doctoral, and it inadvertently got left out of the contract. I feel like we're obligated to that. There's been a lot of comments. I saw some of the same emails. I've responded to some of those emails, as has Member Gugis, and maybe some of the rest of you have responded as well. I just feel like we're obligated to do it. We had an agreement. It didn't get put in the contract. We're now living up to our end of the agreement, and...
President Quigley, question. Do we currently have... do our educators have the ability to get reimbursed if they choose to go back to school and get a master's or a PhD? Are our educators?
That is correct.
That is correct. Thank you very much.
How much?
We budget 350... we budget 350,000 dollars annually for teachers' tuition reimbursement. Annually, we budget 350,000 dollars. Every... that's just for teachers. Well, people covered under the teacher's contract.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion from the board?
Oh, yes, I have some more discussion. And we just found this out. If it just, again, you know, I'm sorry, I'm a preacher and me, so it just looked like the appearance of evil. What my Bible says is because he's not here tonight, he can't speak on this, and maybe you still would vote the same, but I have to stay away from the appearance of evil, and if this was something that we had, then we could have had a discussion, and then by right, you know, your word is your bond, and if his contract had said that, then I am willing to vote on that, but I've got to know why, in this particular timing, that it is right here tonight, and so therefore, I am concerned about that.
I guess what I don't understand is, it's a board action item, so if that conversation needs to be held, it needs to be held by the members of this board. I don't understand why we would need Dr. Mitchum to explain the action that we're going to take. If we're taking action, then we should be able to explain our action. I don't see the point of Dr... I don't see the point of Dr. Mitchum needing to be here or not being here to explain the action that we're going to take.
No, not now.
So, that's my concern, Member Campbell, is this is action. We're taking not action that Dr. Mitchum's taking.
Okay, why did we decide then? Why did we decide to do this now? We've saw this. He's been in this position since, you know, the school year. Why is it we just now finding out about it to do right by him? I want to do right by anybody, because he comes back to haunt you when you don't. You reap what you sow, I believe.
Well, this was made apparent to me in June, or end of May, that there was the error in the contract, and so with schedules of meetings and so on, so forth, it just ended up on this particular agenda. There's no hidden agenda or anything else, and in fact, I... Ma'am, we'll discuss it up here. There's a public comment period for this. Thank you. So, we have... if there's any further discussion up here, we have a motion. We have a second. Liz, do you have any further comments?
No.
Thank you. Motion and second. Any further discussion, new board members? Court, roll call, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Seeing.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Gugis?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Moving down the agenda, pillars of Valley View. Who's doing the pillars?
I'm doing one.
What's the first one?
Bilingual?
Okay. Okay.
Good evening, distinguished board members, senior leadership, and members of the community. Those of us who work in our bilingual education department are pleased to present Mrs. Mariel Salivar as our pillar of Valley View. After graduating from the University of Findlay in Ohio and obtaining a master's degree in education from Saint Xavier University, Mrs. Salivar started her career as an educator in 1997 as a bilingual teacher in Chicago Public Schools. She came to Valley View in 1997, I'm sorry, she came to Valley View in August of 2005 as a bilingual second grade teacher, and she became the coordinator for the bilingual education department in 2006. In 2009, she obtained a master's degree in reading from Concordia University. Mariel is a hardworking educator who is committed to the development and mastery of literacy skills, the emotional well-being, and the academic success of all students in our district. She is especially committed to our students who initiate their education with limited English proficiency. She has a passion for staying updated in the areas of effective literacy and language development, and she shares this knowledge with teachers and administrators when she designs and facilitates professional development sessions. Mariel's commitment and dedication have granted her the respect and appreciation of her coworkers and supervisors. The role that she has played in our department for the past five years has contributed tremendously to the increase in the number of students who become proficient in English at the end of each school year, and who can then continue their education in our mainstream program. It is because of this and much more that the bilingual education department is honored to recognize Mrs. Mariel Salivar as a true pillar of Valley View.
One more.
One more. Office personnel, correct?
Thank you.
Administratives, whatever.
Thank you, I'd like to introduce Joy Ostama, a pillar of Valley View. Joy is our payroll supervisor here at Valley View School District. She's responsible for making 3,000 people happy every two weeks.
Don't get sick.
She began as our payroll assistant in April of 2002. In 2006, the payroll department had experienced a long-term illness with its then-current payroll supervisor. Joy stepped up to fill that void. Our employees never missed a check, and I don't think they ever realized how difficult that was, that challenge was for her. Since then, she's rebuilt our payroll department, she's trained two payroll assistants, hired two payroll assistants and trained them. Over the past several years, she's implemented direct deposit, she's assisted with establishing an employee management plan for their retirement, and spearheaded employee access to our payroll information online. Joy is accountable for the accuracy of all of our employees' pay and their deductions. She has a tremendous wealth of knowledge, she knows our payroll contracts, our employee contracts, their benefits and their deductions, as well as her pension plans. I think Joy has great patience also, she takes the time to explain our employees' pay and any questions that may come up about their deductions. She truly is a pillar of Valley View.
Liz Ann reports, any board members, any activities that they wish to discuss? Go ahead.
I guess I just want to report on the great success of the first session of the summer learning experience. I think that kids and teachers and everybody has just seen the great success of that program. So if you have your kids in that, I'm sure you've seen it, I think the teachers have had a tremendous time with it. I think it's really been a great year for us on that, and I look forward to what the second session brings. So, so I wanted to say to you, Ms. Smith, and some of the people here in the audience, and all the teachers, and I see Mr. Paskavage out there, and I see some of our principals from the summer learning experience, great job to all of you, the teachers, the staff, and all the people behind the scenes that put that program together. I think it's top-notch, I think the teachers appreciated the professional development that came with it. The parents, I think, have been overwhelmed with how engaged their kids were to actually want to go and not play with their friends outside, but go to school and learn some really great stuff. So just a really great job for you guys, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Vice President Goojus, and I just want to say that on behalf of everyone who has worked behind the scenes with summer learning program, teachers, our administrators, it just shows why we're here. First and foremost, we're here for the students, and this is just one example of the great things to come in Valley View. So just, I commend everyone who has been involved in each stage of summer learning, and I'm just excited for things to come and for Summer Learning 2013. So please keep your ears and eyes open for that, because we are really going to look at expanding this program, and we're also excited about all-day kindergarten, too, for this upcoming school year. We're really here about the students, and we make student-centered decisions each and every time, so let's continue to keep that in the forefront.
And how many were enrolled in the first session?
685 students, and we're looking at that same number for second session, because we really want to ensure that as many children can take advantage of this opportunity as possible. So we've had requests for current students who enrolled in session one, but they didn't enroll in session two, so we've honored those requests, and we're really just trying to make sure that we keep our enrollment numbers monitored heavily, just due to staff constraints.
That's great stuff, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Benegas?
Yes, we are having the block party of the year on August 4th at 12 noon till 9:00 PM at the Promenade here in Bolingbrook. We'll be celebrating the return to school, collecting school supplies, donations for needy families. We're going to have all sorts of great music, entertainment, food, beverages, and of course, with that comes awesome family fun. This will be, there will also have some demonstrations of Comcast Internet Essentials program throughout the day. The attendance is free, food and beverages will be available from different restaurants at the Promenade, and this is being, this will help, the event is to benefit the children of our community and the Valley View Educational Enrichment Foundation. The major sponsor events are the Promenade at Bolingbrook and your local cable company, Comcast Cable, that services video internet and phone services here at your local town. Thank you.
And this is the third annual, Larry? Of this, someone?
Yeah, last year was...
Third annual?
Yeah, last year?
Yeah.
All right, so no rain this year, let's not get rained out this year. Even though we need some rain, though.
Any other reports? Any other reports? While, while we're on this, I just want to thank all the people from Valley View and the kind emails and cards and letters and emails and Facebook postings that you gave to our family on the loss of my sister, means a great deal, even from my parents' perspective, to receive stuff from people they don't even know, but I certainly do appreciate it, and on behalf of my family, the entire Quigley family, I want to thank you. And I, I said this in my sister's eulogy, 34-year-olds aren't supposed to get breast cancer exams, and 37-year-olds aren't supposed to die of breast cancer. So if you think for a second that you have a problem and you're under 40 because you're not taking that scheduled exam, please go get checked out. It's just too hard on your family if you, my sister was a single female, living the good life in the East Coast, having a great time, and it all stopped one random Saturday morning, as she told me. So, again, I really do appreciate the kind thoughts and cards and what have you, so appreciate that. Moving down the agenda, audience participation, anybody would like to adjust their views to the board this evening?
Ladies, this is your opportunity now, you're going to have to say something about anything that we ever know, but if you have a desire to speak, then don't worry about the rest of them.
Please state your name and where you're from.
My name's Andrea Anderson, I'm from Romeoville, I'm a parent and a teacher. Mrs. Campbell, thank you very much for trying to table something that is a big issue in the neighborhood. I appreciate it, it's more than my salary, and I know that there are multiple people, including, I believe, Dr. Mitchum, who wouldn't have minded. I appreciate trying to table something for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving down the agenda, student due process cases, Mr. Grzafi.
Yes, student due process cases A and B are presented for your approval this evening as presented.
Motion to accept?
So moved.
We have a motion, Ms. Campbell, second by Mr. Bull. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
Abstain.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Action reports 12.2, since we already did 12.1.
I am requesting, President Quigley, this is an addendum to the previously board-approved courses. We have AP Calculus Section AB and AP Calculus Section BC. Now, for the previous school year 2011/12, this weighting was already implemented, so we're just doing an addendum to this. Grades for coursework in AP Calculus, as well as AP Calculus BC/AB, will be weighted on an honor scale, starting at 5.0 for A, 4.0 for B, going down in that scale, and this course will be worth .5 credits per semester in the area of mathematics. So again, this was effective for the 2011/12 school year, we're just asking for the addendum.
So moved.
Second. Motion and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Mr. Grzafi, 911's phone system.
Yes, two action reports this evening, 13.1 is a recommendation to approve a licensing agreement with Will County's 911 Emergency Telephone System Board. They're working to upgrade their network infrastructure at all 911 PSAPs, or Public Safety Answering Points, to provide a high-speed, reliable, and redundant wireless network that will interconnect all 911 PSAPs. The county is requesting permission to place two two-foot microwave antennas on the current tower located at Bolingbrook High. This will be used to connect the 911 center to a wireless network for a new computer-aided dispatch system, connections of public safety radio consoles, E911 call handling equipment connectivity, and future E911 technologies. We've attached this request to the information provided to you, it's also been reviewed by our legal counsel, and so we are recommending approval at this time.
So moved.
Motion?
Nope.
Second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion on the 911 agreement? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
13.2 is a reimbursement resolution for capital projects. This is a protective measure that's been discussed with the Finance Committee many, many months ago, and it basically allows the district to pass a reimbursement resolution to issue bonds for the full-day kindergarten expansion project, should it decide to do so. The action this evening does not obligate the board in any way to issue any bonds, but if the financial wherewithal of the district were to take a downward slide to the point where the district felt and the board felt it needed to take action, passing this resolution would be looked upon favorably by the IRS, and certainly would trigger any future actions in terms of bond notification notices and hearings that would come before the public. And so again, I've attached some guidelines regarding the type of debt that this reimbursement would entail. One of the things that we've talked about at length, both in finance, as well as at the diocese here, is the potential that state-funded pension liabilities are going to be pushed back locally to school districts throughout the state, which could put a very heavy burden on, on school districts financially. Right now, that estimated liability could, could be in excess of a million dollars annually. And so certainly, that was something that was not really on the horizon when the district felt that all-day kindergarten was, was something that it wanted to provide to, to the community. But with that becoming a potential reality for us, probably in the November elections, not knowing exactly what the intent is, this gives us a little bit of protection in passing this resolution. And so, again, it is something that was discussed at length in the Finance Committee, and we're just now bringing it to you to make sure we have it done.
Any discussion? Oh, actually, we need a motion before we can have some discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, yeah, seconded. I have just one question. If we were to do that, this is more of a comment, this will come back to the board, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Ms. Hox, personnel issues.
Thank you, President Quigley. Before I go into my action item, I would just like to give you an update on the release and recall, where we're at in that process. So far, we're certi, we are completed with all of our certified callbacks, and out of all of those that were released, there are only five that have not been recalled to date. They are still on the list, and if any positions come open for which they're certified to teach, they will be called back. As far as classified for our aides, we are down, I think, to our last one or two, so it appears that there's going to be 33 at this point that are not called back. And again, same for them, as with certified staff, any openings that come open within the next year, they will be called back according to seniority order based on their certification or their area. So I just wanted to give you that update. Action report 14.1, consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel. This evening, we're seeking your approval on 146 items for certified personnel, 170 for classified personnel, eight for classified administrative personnel, and nine for certified administrative personnel.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Before we move on, I just, sorry, I would just like to say that in the consolidated action report that was just approved, there were some administrative positions that were approved, and I'd like to just bring those to your attention this evening. We're not going to ask them to come up and say anything, but if I call your name, if you could please stand, and I know there's a couple that may not have been able to make it tonight due to previous engagements and appointments that they had scheduled. The first one is Karen Florries, she's going to be the new Core Content Administrator for Literacy at Romeoville High School, she's currently an English teacher there. Congratulations and welcome. The next one, and I don't believe she's here tonight, is Elizabeth McGuire, she's going to be the Core Content Administrator for Math at Bolingbrook High School, she's currently a math teacher in the district. Laura Lucas is, was just recommended for the Assistant Principal at Irene King Elementary School. Congratulations, Laura. Our next one is Kathy Nygro, she has been approved for the Assistant Principal for RC Hill Elementary School, I didn't see her here this evening, but we want to congratulate and welcome her. And then, last but definitely not least, is Kristen Soprich, she is going to be the new Student Services Administrator, signed to staff, congratulations.
Any other? No? Superintendent's information reports.
I just have a question for Sharon. Where are we at, do we have all the kindergarten teachers that we need?
We are, we currently reviewed the numbers today, we have added a couple more positions, but we're doing it on a bi-weekly basis, we're checking the numbers of enrollment, and as those numbers increase for each building, then we're adding on at that point in time. So we feel that there'll probably be a few more that'll have to be added on, but we're getting there.
Last time I checked, it was like 915 that had opted for all-day and about 20 that had not.
Approximately 989 students, and that includes our bilingual students, as well as half-day, which we're at about 19 for half-day.
19 and half-day, okay.
With that, I just want to make another comment, because I know some of my parents at the Head Start is that they thought it was $200 a month, so if there's anybody out there who thinks it's $200 a month, and it was because of the language barrier, but we explained that to them when our Head Start ended that year, so we probably have more.
It's $200 for the year.
It's $200 for the year.
Yeah, but now I explain it to them, but I just want to make sure that they know it's not $200 a month. Thank you, Vice President Goojus. It's $200 a year.
Thank you. Superintendent's IR reports.
No reports this evening.
Legal Services, Mr. Alpern.
No report this evening.
AFT report?
No report.
Valley View Council report?
No report.
Valley View Office Personnel Council report? Apparently, no report. Any old business for the board tonight? Any new business before the board tonight? Any questions on the public on actions that we have taken this evening? Seeing none, hearing none. Please state your name and where you're from. Thank you.
My name's Eric Duncan. I live in Bolingbrook. I just, I wanted to commend the board, because this is the first I heard that we were offering a BC calculus program in Bolingbrook, and that's very important to me. I have two kids who went to Bolingbrook High School, and they didn't have an opportunity to take that, but I think it's a fantastic initiative on the part of the board and everyone involved in the decision-making process. So, commend you all for that, and it will really, I think, help to elevate us further and put us on par with some of the best school districts in the state. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Announcements by the board, besides the one Mr. Vinegas already did? You can do it again if you'd like, though.
I want to thank the nine parents, teachers, and staff that emailed me today. They had some questions about Dr. Mitchum's tuition reimbursement. I responded to those emails. I want to encourage the public, staff, or teachers to feel free to email me. I respond to all the emails. I respond with an email and my cell number. And I'm a servant of the district, and if you email me, I will respond to you. So, I want to thank those nine for doing that, and if there's others that have questions about that issue or any other issue, feel free to email us. To go to our website, there's a picture of us, and you can click on it, and there's our email address. And feel free to email me, and I will respond to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by the board this evening? Hope everybody's having a great summer. It's really hot out there, so be sure to hydrate. I also want to commend, just because I'm involved in youth baseball, the Bolingbrook Rampage Rumble had a tournament at Indian Boundary this weekend, and I think three of the four Rampage teams advanced to the final game, and I know two of three of those teams got second place, and I'm not sure if, I'm not sure what the older kids did, but they also, the 14-year-old Rampage baseball team won their division, a game that was supposed to be played at King County Cougar Stadium. Unfortunately, due to a scheduling problem, and I think a weather-related thing, they had to play over at a high school in Wheaton. But congratulations on those, the kids playing sports for the summer. And I got to tell you, as a parent, you're standing out there, and it's five games of